All right, folks, I'm looking at 6:30 on the clock. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Loganville Planning Commission for Thursday, March 23rd, 2023 to order. If you would, if, uh, stand with us, please. We're gonna have the, uh, invocation and the pledge. The invocation will be led by Bill Williams, pledge by Tiffany Ellis.
Dear Heavenly Father, ask you to watch over us tonight as we do the city's business. Watch over everyone who's here today and our first responders and our military. Just ask us in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As everybody from the commission had a chance to look at the minutes from our January meeting, do we have any questions or comments about those minutes? Do I have a motion to, uh, uh, accept? Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. All right, adopted, thank you. All right. This evening, since we've got, uh, one property owner, uh, in multiple cases, we're just gonna go ahead and read and deal with all at one time, uh, save a little bit of time and, uh, just go ahead and knock them out there. And then, uh, soon as we, uh, I read these off, then we'll have the applicant or their representative come up if they have any comments. All right? On case A 23-001, Dina Vasquez requests annexation of property located at 315 Skyland Drive, Loganville in Gwinnett County. The map parcel is 5159013. It is .49 plus or minus acres. And then case R 23-002, same owner filed an application to rezon the 4.49 acres, uh, located at 315 Skyland Drive. Map again, parcel is 5159013, Gwinnett County, Georgia. The property owner, Dina Vasquez. Uh, the current zoning is O and I in Gwinnett County. The requested zoning is CH for commercial highway for development of existing office with opaque fenced outdoor storage. Case three for C is A 23-003. Dina Vasquez requests annexation of property located 315, uh, Skyland Drive, Loganville, Gwinnett County. Map parcel on this one, 5159014, .46 plus or minus acres. Case D, R 23-004, Dina Vasquez filed an application to rezon the .46 plus or minus acres located at 315 Skyland Drive. Map and parcel, 5159014, Gwinnett County, Georgia. The property owner, Dina Vasquez, uh, the re- the current zoning here again is O and I. Requested zoning for this is CH for the development of existing office and the, uh, with opaque fence outdoor storage. At this time, I'd like to ask the owner or representative, if they have any comments, please come to the podium and address the commission.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Ross. I'm with the firm of Powell and Edwards. Our address is 10 Lumpkin Street in Lawrenceville. And tonight I'm here to represent Ms. Dina Vasquez and her company, A3 Cable Runners. Would it be okay if I hand it out? Everyone to hand out? I realize I'm the only in the town, people, you all from going home tonight, so I'm tired of, uh, belabor too much. And the front of the page, um, just shows the front of the office. And let me get a little bit into the history. I know, uh, Mr. Prather and his team have given you a good background, but I just wanna make sure there's some, some things that are clear and that there's, there's not any confusion. First of all, my client purchased this property in September of last year. So anything that's happened in the past is not my client. My client purchased it after it had already been rezoned. Now, my understanding is back in 2020, uh, Mr. Mark Davis was the previous owner. The property was originally an R 100 in Gwinnett County. And he asked this committee and the city council in 2020 to annex it to commercial from residential, and that was denied. But then they promptly, Mr. Davis, again, went to Gwinnett County and he asked to have it zoned office institutional, OI, and that was granted. And all the things you see there, the fence that's up, that was all things that were mandated by Gwinnett County. And if, uh, if you all need, I do have a copy of the actual action that, that created that. But I kinda wanted to give you all a little bit of background, uh, before we get started. Now, uh, since September, my clients have been operating the office, uh, for their business there. OI in Gwinnett does not allow for outdoor storage. So, I mean, I'm not trying to, to hide the ball or trick anybody. That is the main impetus is my clients would like to be able to store their equipment. Now, let me be clear of what their equipment consists of. First of all, they do not do any heavy machinery operation on their property. They do have four trailers, and those are, um, for things like their inline drills. Those are those, those boxes that you see the pipes kinda come down sideways, you see on the side of the road sometimes, and they have crawlers on them sometimes. They also have, um, a tank truck that carries water tanks or liquid tanks on them, uh, but they have four total of those. And then they have a total of about 10 trucks. And when I say trucks, they're pickup trucks. And that's essentially their fleet and what they would have there. They already have the trucks coming in and out. So the only thing that is gonna change as far as traffic, any change in that, would be these trailers coming on and going into the storage area, which we'll, we'll talk about in just a minute. They leave about six o'clock in the morning and they come back about six o'clock in the evening. There's no, they, they park them and they go home. They wanna be able to put everything in that closed up area in the back and leave it. There's no other changes or not more people coming in, less people coming in. It would literally be bringing those trailers out in the morning and in at night and allowing to keep the trucks in the back area. So that is what they're, they're asking for. Now, I wanna talk a little bit about the surrounding areas. So, actually, if you skip to the next page, you have a copy of the site plan. And what we did was in red, you can see where the privacy fence, uh, that was added is. And that basically encloses the storage area. So that'll kinda give you, uh, an overview idea, but if you go to the next page, I actually have a couple pictures that show the back area of the property. This is behind that gate that you saw in, on the cover photo area. And this shows you, for, for perspective, the garage is what you see on the right-hand side of the photograph. And it is directly, as you can see in that, the site plan, the garage is directly behind the office. So all that you see on the side there is essentially onto the second parcel, 'cause there's two roughly half acres, just a little bit under, but roughly half acre parcels adjacent to each other there. And then the next page shows kinda the depth of that area. It goes on down, uh, the side of the house area. So that kinda gives you an idea of the storage area that we're talking about. If you go to the next page then, and I think this is important to get a perspective, uh, this is the aerial view and it's just, uh, uh, I think this is, this one's actually a Google Maps, um, overview here, uh, but you can see, uh, that this is definitely the Loganville Commercial Corridor. Oh, thank you very much. This is definitely the Loganville Commercial Corridor. In particular, um, you'll notice behind, uh, the office property is Judah Crossing. That is an office park. That is what would be directly behind, uh, where the storage area is. Now, there's no question whatsoever, and we're not trying, again, we're very transparent, we recognize that the driveway runs next to a residential property. Uh, but again, the only change is going to be from today, the way it operates now, is the, the trailers, those four trailers, would be going back and forth there once in the morning and once in the evening. And that's really the only, the only change you would see there. And it would not be, again, it would be parked farthest away from the residential neighbor, rather than closest to them. Then on the back page, um, this is from Gwinnett County GIS. Uh, I thought this was very telling. Uh, you can see, uh, the, the parcel here where A3 is, uh, this small OI square. Everything else along the corridor is either Loganville CH or there's, uh, believe that's a Gwinnett, two Gwinnett C2 parcels, and then of course the R 100 of Skyland Drive there. But we believe that the proper zoning, if this committee, uh, this commission and the, the county commission see fit, that the proper designation would be the CH and not the OI designation. So first we have to get the annexation, that always has to come first. And then if in fact it is annexed, then it has to be zoned. So we believe that we meet all the requirements for annexation. We do not believe it would be a terrible detriment. Uh, again, it's already an operating concern there. The only thing that's a change is just being able to store those trailers and the trucks in the back. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure there's some folks here that are gonna speak, and I'd like to reserve my remaining time to, uh, to rebuttal if needed.
All right, if you'd like to have a seat, we'll go ahead and have, uh, any citizen that is in favor of the applications, come up and speak if you so like. Yeah, those in favor. All right, nobody in favor? All right. Then those against, if you would, approach the podium, come on up. Come on over here to the podium, if you would, state your name and your address. Right, yes ma'am.
Hi, my name is Janice Walker. I'm the third house from the actual building. And I wanna be real truthful because your vehicles are going the opposite way on Skyland Drive through the neighborhood. You're right there on 78. I wanna know why they can go through the neighborhood when we have kids that are playing on that street? And you're talking about trucks that are pulling heavy equipment? And, um, they don't come home at six, they're coming home at eight. So that's two things that I'd like to talk about. The third one is, I wanna know why you would allow this in a, in a residential area? Why couldn't they make a driveway that goes out to 78 and use 78, or at least require them to use their cars to go out, out their driveway and take a right on 78 instead of going down Skyland Drive to Oak? Uh, anyway, what I'm trying to say is, they're not being truthful. The, the vehicles are coming in and out, they leave at six maybe, but they are, are there sometimes during the day, and then at night, sometimes late at eight o'clock, they're coming through. Yes. Mm-hmm. Through, through a neighborhood residential street where children are playing. Is there a reason why we would allow an already commercial building to, um, well, it's office, whatever it was zoned, office, commercial? Is there a reason why we would allow heavy equipment there? I mean, it's at the beginning of a neighborhood, people, we have value in our homes. And this is gonna destroy the value of our homes. Heavy equipment coming in and out. Um, the first month you guys were there, we looked at your dumpster at the driveway for, forever before that moved, and the gate was wide open with all the equipment for the longest time until you closed that. So I realize those have been taken care of, and as long as we can't see things, it would be okay, but I'm just trying to understand why you would allow access on a residential street.
That was Gwinnett County previously, they're asking us to, we haven't done anything yet, but they're asking us, but that was Gwinnett County.
Okay, so that's my case. Of what I'm trying to say is, I don't understand why on a residential street you would allow this. So I'm hoping that you'll consider that, mainly because of the children, but also we have speed bumps that nobody adheres to. And I happen to live three, uh, houses down from it, so you have in the mornings when they're leaving and they go over those speed bumps, the, the noise just shakes the house. I mean, it's crazy. And, um, that would be a concern too. So is there a way, or can you consider a way of having them annex 78 and not use that street at all that we live on?
That would have to be, uh, an issue that would probably go through the city, but I'm seeing some shaking heads of no, that that would not be an option.
Okay, so then I would ask that you please consider all those things because, again, there are children there, there's pets. I mean, we're already putting up with cut through traffic, people throwing trash, people flying over those speed bumps. We have this other dump sitting there on the corner that we don't know what's gonna happen to that. We were told when the building initially, or the other owner initially, um, we actually had a meeting there. And we were told that that wooded area was gonna be, um, made into a path for his employees to walk on during lunch. So we were okay with that. But now you're talking about something completely different. And the other question I have is, how is it possible that we're here when all this stuff has already taken place? The equipment's there, the trees have been knocked down, the gravel's been put in, and the vehicles are parked there, they're coming in and out of the street. Why now? Why are we doing this now?
Well, they're, they're applying for the city. Now, they are in Gwinnett County. Have you contacted Gwinnett County with your concerns?
Not yet.
Okay, that's where you should've probably started, uh, just to be off the record. Start with them, let them know of your concerns, but that really doesn't have any bearing on what we're doing here tonight.
Okay, so what are we doing here tonight then?
Whether or not we're going to, uh, uh, submit a recommendation to the city council for annexation and rezoning.
Okay. Well, I don't understand why you're talking about rezoning when they're already doing what, they're already there. I mean, you're talking about rezoning it to something that they're already doing.
Well, when they annex into the city, we have to give it a zoning classification as well. We don't take over the existing, it has to come in as a city zoning.
Okay.
So that's why they're, they're applying for a city zoning.
I just think it's really frustrating at us, the homeowner, to have to sit here and go through this twice. I mean, this is again, we're doing this again. Here we are again, trying to get something done. And the last time, no one wanted to hear anything that we had to say. And we put up with it. The guy put up a fence, which was really nice for the first houses right there, because that would've drove me nuts if I lived there. But I still don't understand how anybody can rezon something to allow those trucks to come in and out of a residential street. I just don't, I don't get it. That's all I wanted to say, I don't know if anybody else wants to speak.
All right, anybody else want to speak? Come on up to the podium. Thank you, ma'am. If you would, state your name and your address, please.
Sure, I'm Donna Hayne, and this is my husband, Michael Hayne, and we live in Garden Walkway in Loganville, which is the cul-de-sac connecting to that street. I can't really see that far to tell you what you're looking at, but what we're looking at there doesn't compare what is actually going on, and my husband has a video. They have taken that property and put a stockade fence with no regard, no, no permission from Gwinnett County, I know that for a fact. No permission from Gwinnett County, they stuck up this fence and they were just making their makeshift gravel driveway in and out. Gwinnett County then told them, no, you gotta close that off. Right now, they're illegal, they're parking illegally in Gwinnett County. Gwinnett County understands that they've got a lawyer, so the lawyer's supposedly working with Gwinnett County. But what they're telling you tonight is a glossed over version of what's really going on. Their trucks come through that little strip, that Skyland Drive, all in the morning, the bus traffic for the little kids standing out there by themselves, and these big trucks, they're saying pickup trucks? If you could see what's really going on there, I wouldn't call them pickup trucks. Their big chain haul equipment that they say, oh, they have these little cutters, they stick up over the fence. So when you pull into the subdivision, it looks like a big fat mess, and it's destroying our homes. It's nothing close to what he's showing you there. I don't know what he gave you as a handout, but I can promise you, that's not what's going on.
I would just like to say that I, I leave, my name's Michael, Michael.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I leave and go out 78 many mornings, uh, other mornings I, I go the other way, but I'm by that house at least half, half the week. And I've had to wait several times because they've had two or three trucks lined up on a residential street. And they're big trucks, they're not just pickup trucks. They're, they're big trucks with trailers and heavy equipment, and to where they've, they've got the road blocked, and I had to wait for them to come back out to even get, to get, even get on my way. I've, there's a fire hydrant right in front of the fence, and I've seen them hooked up to that fire hydrant illegally filling up their water tanks. The, the trees that are in the picture, about half of them are gone because they, they cut those down to, to pour gra- to put gravel down, to put their, uh, to use for storage for, for all the equipment. The trees are there as a buffer because even though we're surrounded by commercial properties, that's a residential street. It's a residential neighborhood, and I'm very opposed.
Okay.
So we did.
If you would, microphone, please.
I'm sorry?
We did get, um, signatures real quick within just the last two days of the houses that were home of the people that are opposed to it. If we need to get more signatures, we can. If we need to get new pictures of what's going on, we'll be happy to do that. We've never been to one of these meetings before, don't really know the process. But I promise you, if you ride by, that picture looks nothing like what's going on.
Right, the, the GIS photos are usually, uh, a little outdated. They don't show current pictures.
Yeah. So just one, even out, I don't know if you want this?
Tim, okay, you wanna take, I'll take it here. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Come on up, sir.
My name is David Walker. I, my wife was up here earlier. I live at 285 Skyland Drive. Uh, I can back up what the last couple had to say. Those trucks, they're a truck and trailer, this is true. But when you get one of them out there and trying to get out on 78, they'll sit there and sit there and sit there. Most of us have that normal exit to get to work. We, I know I've, a couple times I've had to go back out, go back down to Old Grove, go down to Brand Street just to get out on 78. And if, just getting out onto Brand itself is a nightmare and a hell in itself. So these trucks, granted, everybody needs a, a business, where they can enjoy life, but this needs to be moved, I'd say, if we, it could be moved into Judah Crossing where they've got plenty of room for all the vehicles, they've got access out onto 78. I don't know what the zoning is in there, but I do know that'd be a better place to put this business. It's just a headache even trying to come in, I've come in behind some of these trucks getting on Skyland, and as much traffic as there is at five or six, it's a nightmare trying to get in there. And they've gotta stop, and it leaves you out on 78 when you're trying to get into the street off that main traffic, 'cause it's a short distance for them to turn into there. So it's nothing but congestion. And with residential area, the kids, the buses, school buses, it, it needs to be changed.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to, come on?
Okay, I'm Carol Hartman. I live at 210 Skyland Drive, which is almost the complete opposite end of the street. And I have heard the rumblings of the machines, the trucks and the machines going over the speed bumps, there's one right in front of my house. And at first, I didn't really understand what it was, but, you know, hearing the other stories, it has to be those, those things, 'cause I don't go to the window and peek out every moment, you know, but it's quite the racket. So I'm just gonna say this, these huge machines and vehicles make a lot of noise, even at my end of the street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is David Bacon, live at 250 Skyland Drive, a couple, uh, couple houses down from the, from that location. Just wanna piggyback on what they said, it's very noisy, it's loud, the kids out there, they play out there, it's just not a good look for the neighborhood, it's residential.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Um, I live, uh, my name's Andrew Manick. I live at 3440 Garden Walk Lane, which is, uh, in the, the end of the street in the cul-de-sac, uh, at the back of the community. I bought my house in August of 2020, um, when I, when I, which was kinda the beginning of this situation, so I, I wasn't really part of the initial, uh, portion of what went on. I, I wasn't a huge fan of, uh, commercial property, however you want, uh, the, the framing, uh, but I was willing to give the benefit of the doubt. They did a good job of making it at least look like a house, which I appreciated, the driveway didn't look terrible. So I was absolutely willing to give the benefit of the doubt and to see what, uh, you know, to, to give it a shot. Since, uh, they've moved in, it's, I mean, there's a reason why I'm here today. I, I feel as a homeowner in this community disrespected honestly by this business. There, there's already been a- There's already been a few things mentioned, I'm not gonna reiterate that. But what hasn't been mentioned was the cars that were out there with for sale signs. I've never worked at a business where they let me put a car for sale. The dumpster, again, right at the corner of the street. It was mentioned that they built a gate and a makeshift driveway which tracked in tons of dirt into the yard, or, I'm sorry, into the street, which, I mean, made the cars filthy, I had to clean my car multiple times when they did that. Again, I'm willing to give the benefit of the doubt, but I'm only gonna give that so far. As everybody else has said too, they bring their trucks into the, into the street there, they park them on the side in the morning. My wife multiple times, I have two children that go to Tripp Elementary, I drop them off at school in the morning, or my wife does. And multiple times, we've had to sit there while they have the trailers on the side of the street. And we have to, in order to avoid them, go into oncoming traffic basically, on the other side of the street. And as you can see on 78 there, going into Skyland Drive, it's a pretty big angle. So when people turn into Skyland, you gotta do it pretty quick, because you've got cars behind you, there's not a lot of time to stop. So if somebody's going on the opposite side of that street, trying to go around their trailers, it's only a matter of time before somebody gets on a head-on collision, and it's gonna end up being my car with my family in it. And that's absolutely unacceptable in my opinion. I wouldn't be here today again if I just didn't feel as a homeowner in this neighborhood, just absolutely disrespected. I think it's absolutely laughable that they're trying to get zoning for large equipment. There's already large equipment there, I drove by it today, there's a huge truck back there, I don't know what it's for, I'm not in the business. But it, it's just, it's not the right place. There are so many places in the beautiful city of Loganville for a business to be, where this would work just fine, and to try to fit a square peg into a round hole, and to inconvenience all of these people in this neighborhood is, in my opinion, it's, it's unacceptable. I hope you consider this when you're making your decisions. It's, it's been very unfortunate. Again, I'm always willing to give the benefit of the doubt, especially for a small business, business of any size. But you know, my, my charitable ability has run out, and that's why I'm here today.
Thank you very much. Alright, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes ma'am, come on.
I'm Tammy Dubose, and I live at 232 Garden Walkway, which is the cul-de-sac around the corner. And I can say that amen and ditto to all that has been said. It is a menace, it is a hazard, it is an eyesore, it is, it degrades our residential area. I can't even count the number of days that I have gone to work, and I'm a school teacher, so I leave at the times. They say it's at six o'clock, which is not accurate. I have had days where there are trucks parked on both sides of Skyland, making it almost impossible to squeeze through and get around to get to 78, so I can get to work. And I hope that you will take to heart the things that you have heard from those of us that live in this area, that deal with this on a daily basis, and that you would consider those of us who are living there in the decision that you have to make today. Thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am. Yes ma'am.
Evening everybody, my name is Lucie Anne, last name De Silva, so I am at 3525 Garden Walk Lane. When we first bought the property, my husband is a veteran, that was 2016. The neighborhood has been active with kids, and now that I'm back, I moved to Minnesota, so I wasn't here for the initial phase of that project. But I'm back and here it is again. What I have to say is that we've had more and more kids coming into our neighborhood. At this time of the year, I guarantee you, you can find them in the streets, and they're everywhere. What I, my biggest concern with that particular lot is, at times where I've had issues or cases where coming home, one, it's already dangerous enough to turn into Skyland Drive, because you have vehicles coming behind of you, and if you don't be quick to turn in, they'll be in your back. And it's happened so many times, almost got hit last week. One day I was coming in, there were like two vehicles on both sides of the street, and here I am forced to maneuver, getting out of the way of who's coming behind me with a force, and trying to avoid hitting two vehicles on the opposite side of the street. So I'm not even sure what type of business that's there, because as the young man said earlier, one, there was a car there for sale, and I'm like, is it a car lot, or is it what type of business? So yeah, it was, there was a grain one, just like pretty old vehicles. So I think you guys can take us, you know, whatever measure you decide to take, you know, take most of our concerns into consideration, into your decision-making, so that's just all I want to say today.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else? If no one else, I'd like to open the floor back up to the representative to have a rebuttal.
Again, I want to, I want to mention that my clients have only been there since September, and they're, they do want to be good neighbors. They bought a property that was advertised as O&amp;I, and no one has contacted them with some of these issues, and we're happy to address some of those, absolutely. First of all, Ms. Walker had some very good points. The issue of the vehicles coming evidently down Skyland instead of coming off 78. My clients will absolutely agree that you condition any rezoning, which would make it a law, make it enforceable, that they can only enter from 78. So any of the conversations about coming down and making noise over the speed bumps, any of that, that is very well taken. They don't want to do anything to endanger any children. They will come in, agree to be conditioned to only come in off 78. Ms. Walker also had a wonderful idea, and I, I think Mr. Prather and I are probably on the same page here. We would absolutely love to be able to have the entrance onto 78. I think the problem is gonna be DOT is probably not gonna give us a curb cut that close to Judah and Skyland. So if, if anyone had any pull with DOT that could make that happen, but due to safety, typically there's minimum sight distances and minimum distances. Or absolutely, we would be happy to do that, that would be great for everybody. Unfortunately, that's probably just not an option. But we're happy to investigate that before the, the next work session with commissioners to see. But I can almost tell you for sure that there's just not distance to do that. Also, I heard some people had mentioned the dumpster and the cars, those were absolutely problems, and those have been taken care of. My clients immediately have gotten that taken care of. They actually had to get Gwinnett County code enforcement officers to help get the dumpster company to get their dumpster out of the front. So they were trying to get it moved quicker, and they actually had to have some assistance in that. But absolutely all well-taken points. Mr. and Mrs. Hayne, Ms. Haynes mentioned the fence, and I just wanted to point this out. I have a copy, this is the Board of Commissioners from Lawrenceville, Georgia, September 22nd, 2020. Case number RZC 2020-00019. And one of the requirements is number 2A, a six-foot-high wooden opaque privacy fence shall be installed. The privacy fence will be maintained in good condition by the property owner. Gwinnett County zoning was initially of the opinion, in fact, we had actually filed for a variance with the county for that, and Gwinnett County Planning actually pulled this before I did, and pointed out that it was actually required by the county and was approved by the county to be there. So they actually had to have that, and again, this is a matter of public records, it's available on, I pulled it off online. As far as, I think there was an issue about the water meter or the hydrant. What's related to my client is that they actually have a water meter on the far side of the hydrant with the county that allows them to use that, they pay for the water that they use from the hydrant. Other than that, you know, we, we absolutely 1,000% get the concerns everyone has, but we're, we want to work through it. We want to help, you know, and we're just asking to be able to, to have those trailers there. But that's, those are our concessions at least, and we're happy to make other concessions if need be, to be good neighbors.
Thank you very much sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the commission? Hold on just a second Bill.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, at this point, need to call for a motion on the issues at hand. Do I have a motion that we proceed?
I still want to talk, ask Tim a couple of questions myself before.
That'll come, that'll come in just a second.
I move that we move forward today.
You're saying close the discussion for the public discussion is what you're saying? Okay, I understand now.
And I'm gonna do a hand vote, those in, in favor of the, the motion, raise your hand.
Yeah, what are we saying? I'm confused here.
Alright, the motion is to move forward with the recommendations as applied for. And to make a motion to go to the city council for their next meeting for both.
No, wait a minute.
To talk about.
No, that's not what we're talking about.
Go ahead Tim.
You need to make a motion on the very first case, the annexation?
That's right, we gotta do it one by one.
Yes, but you need a motion and a second to open up discussion for the commission members.
Okay, alright, alright, so starting with the, going back to case by case, not like we did when we first came in and did them all at one time. On the case number one, the A23-001, the property located at 315 Skyland Drive, Loganville, Gwinnett County, map parcel 5159013, 0.49 acres plus or minus, this would be annexation.
Once you get to the discussion, yes.
Do I have a motion to move forward here? Okay, got a motion, do I have a second?
To, a motion to approve or deny?
Yeah, a motion to approve or deny. Approve, alright, motion to approve, second to approve.
To approve the request for annexation?
Yes.
To approve the discussion between the, of the commission?
You, you have to have a motion and a second to the motion to open up discussion between the county, between the planning commission members.
Opening, okay.
So this is, you're, my misunderstanding. Yes, just a, a motion and a second, not a full vote.
Alright, so go back to it, a motion to open up discussion on first case by the commission. Alright, got a motion, second, and we got a second. Go ahead and discuss on this one or move forward.
Is the motion to approve or deny?
Is that a motion to approve? Careful what you ask for.
I make, I make a motion to approve opening the discussion of the commission.
It's a motion to approve the annexation.
I'm completely confused now.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a motion to approve or deny the annexation.
But we haven't had a discussion.
That comes after the second.
But we don't vote.
Right.
Okay, but we don't vote. Okay, gotcha, now, okay.
No vote, just open, open discussion. Do I have a motion to open discussion on approval or denial?
Yes, for approval.
Alright, motion and second, now, go ahead and discuss this one. Alright, now we're open for discussion on the annexation of the parcel 5159013. Anybody have any comments?
Well, I mean, it's not really over the annexation, I'm.
Y'all have the option to recommend any zoning, it doesn't have to be for the CH. But you have to recommend a zoning for the property, if you, if you recommend approval of the annexation.
Bill, you have a question?
I mean, I don't have a question over the annexation, I have a question over the, over the zoning and, you know.
Yeah, now you can discuss whatever.
I mean, my que, my main question to the, to the applicant is, is there a way to bring that traffic closer to 78? Obviously, you may not be able to access 78 directly, but, but limit your exposure obviously to Skyland Drive, to minimize your exposure obviously to Skyland Drive, as much as, you know, as much as feasible obviously to the residential area as possible.
As far as restricting the traffic flow, or, Bill.
If you had, if you had a driveway, obviously the driveway's on the other side of the house, so they have to drive down Skyland, but if you, where those, where those trees are, if they had a driveway to access that property. Not, I mean, you still have to access Skyland a little bit.
Yeah, just move the driveway closer to 78. Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be something that could fall under y'all's recommendations, yeah. But as far as restricting the traffic flow down Skyland Drive, that's a county road, and we can't.
Right, I understand that, but if you, you know, I mean, at the same time, you're still dealing with a.
Gwinnett County.
You're still dealing with a large truck trying to get off of 78 there, and taking immediate left into the property. You're still dealing with a large truck trying to do that, and that's probably not, you know.
Not a feasible.
Not feasible.
They would have to follow Gwinnett County's distance requirements as far as the driveway goes, you know.
Right, exactly, exactly, and then you're dealing potentially with, right away from the state from 78 and et cetera.
I have a question about the annexation. I guess I'm a little curious as to why you want to be annexed into the city of Loganville, and how is that gonna benefit your company?
So the, several benefits, the reason we want to do that is the O&amp;I district in Gwinnett County, let me stand up to be more respectful, the O&amp;I district in Gwinnett County does not provide for the outdoor storage that your CH designation does. And as there's no other commercial Gwinnett properties in that kind of area, there's a couple, I think there's two C2s in the area for what I provided, but pretty much, there's not really any other options. So I don't think Gwinnett would, it wouldn't make zoning sense to stick a C, a C2 or some type of other commercial zoning for Gwinnett to do it. So it makes more sense, because Loganville uses that whole area as their commercial gateway into the city, all the other properties along there that are in the city of Loganville are all similarly zoned CH. So it is an appropriate zoning designation. The benefit to Loganville, I'll be, the simple obvious one is, one, you would have more control over your commercial port. The benefit to Loganville, I'll be, the simple obvious one is, um, one, you would have control, more control over your commercial corridor there. Two, you get the tax basis thrown in as well. There's a, there's a financial benefit to the city by coming into the city instead of just remaining in the county. If it's okay, if I can address the issue about the driveway, um, I, I heard some collective groans, and I think what maybe an option would be, 'cause another concern would be, if the driveway was placed closer, um, the folks, I think, have had some comments about cars when they're pulling in off Skyland, stacking up. What one possible alternative my clients would be happy to do would be is possibly have two driveways. And they could use the existing driveway as an entrance driveway, so that way, cars aren't getting stuck right behind there. But they could use a second driveway as close as possible to, to seventy-eight as an exit driveway, so when they're coming out, they could pull out that way. So, I mean, we're, again, my clients are, are not evil people, they are trying, they want to make this work, and we're happy to do what we can to make it work.
Yeah, I think as, as Tim pointed out earlier, the problem may be with the Gwinnett DOT and their distances and stuff between that driveway and Highway seventy-eight may be an issue.
Okay, I have, I have two more questions. Tim, will this affect, if this was, if this company's annexed into, um, the city of Loganville, will that affect our first responders?
Not really, because since it's already in, in the scope of the city limits, uh.
Do we go there now? I mean, if the.
Well, I mean, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Gwinnett County, so if, if our responders were closer and could get there quicker, we would respond. You know, whether it's in the city or out of the city. Because they have that intergovernmental agreement with Gwinnett and Walton, you know.
Okay. And, um, about the trailers, I'm a little confused on that. What type of trailers, are you talking about trailers to put big equipment on? To take them out, or what type of trailer are you talking about?
So, I don't have the pictures with me. So the one trailers, um, you've probably seen them, they're the big reels that sometimes you see, uh, plastic pipe wrapped around. So they have a trailer that carries that. And then the drill machines, you've probably seen them and didn't know what they were on the side of the road, they look like big square, rectangular boxes, and sometimes they have tracks on them, and they, they have a pipe that goes under, and that's how it drills. And so they put those on the back, and then they have one, exactly, there you go, that's, but, yeah, like, that's a real, that's a real trailer. And then there is, um.
The one that carries that?
Like that, yep. You guys are really good. So, yeah, that's, so that's, that's it. And again, they're, they're, they're not operated on the premises, but they're, they're carried there. And then there is a, there's a red machine there, too. Is that what it is, a chipper? And then there's a wood chipper, um, that they have, one that has the little chute on the top.
That's the machine.
That's what you see in the picture.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Have you at all attempted to request a zoning to CH from Gwinnett County?
Gwinnett, Gwinnett County does not have a, have a CH zoning. Again, their zoning would, the only commercial zoning, again, they, they are permitted in Gwinnett County as O I. To get it changed, you would have a, what we call a disparate zoning district. So, like, if you look on the picture of the zoning, the thing that happened, it's the last one there, you see there's the one blue square, which is where the O I is. And that's a, it's a, it's an odd, um, zoning district. And Gwinnett's not gonna change that further. I think they kind of said, and again, I wasn't involved in that, that was a previous owner. But I think because it backs up to Judah Crossing, which is an office park, that would be an O, Judah Crossing, if it was in Gwinnett County, I mean, I understand it's in Gwinnett County, but it's, it's under the city of Loganville zoning. So if it was in unincorporated Gwinnett County, that would be an O I designation, rather than what you all have as a CH. So my experience would be that Gwinnett County would not, um, would not grant a zoning for that, because the only Gwinnett County zoning there is all R one hundred residential on, on Skyland there, and it wouldn't be consistent. The CH is consistent with everything that the city of Loganville has done along that road, that the city of Loganville has annexed into the city along there.
On the properties that you mentioned that were C two, that were Gwinnett property.
Yes, ma'am.
Would a C two designation work for your clients?
I'm not sure, um, but again, I, I, just my gut tells me Gwinnett wouldn't, wouldn't do that.
My experience with Gwinnett County is that if you did a C two designation, it'd probably be a condition of zoning or something like that, that they would add to it. They would allow outdoor storage of heavy equipment and stuff like that, so that would be part of the, the rezoning process with Gwinnett County.
H, Gwinnett has a highway service business, and, um, that might be a closer, but, again, I just, uh, I don't think that, that property is gonna be anything but O and I, uh, under Gwinnett County zoning.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is why come to the city of Loganville, rather than going to Gwinnett and exhausting all of your options there? It seems like you had more options, but you did not try to go that route.
Well, unfortunately, under the zoning procedure laws in Georgia, whenever you move to zone a piece of property, uh, if you are not successful, you have a mandatory minimum of six months before you can ask for another zoning. So, um, I, I'm also a city attorney in one of our local cities here as well, and just my experience is that, um, it would be fruitless, and it would be detrimental to them, because it would not be granted, and they would be six months without being able to then come back and, and try with the city of Loganville. Because it's just not a consistent zoning, uh, anywhere else in there. It is an absolutely consistent zoning fit, uh, based on the future growth. And if you look at the twenty forty City of Loganville Comprehensive Plan, they label that entire corridor, um, as commercial, as the commercial corridor. And I understand that, that that is a residential enclave that has survived there, but as far as looking into the twenty forty comprehensive plans, the idea is that that area, wherever it would be annexed in, would be a commercial zone property there.
I have an additional question, I'm sorry. I hate to have you sitting up there.
I need the extra, as you can tell.
Me too. Okay. On the property that is Judah Crossing, Judah Crossing comes out into like, um, a triangle that runs adjacent to your client's property.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, um, have you considered going to the owners of Judah Crossing to ask for, um, an easement onto their property so that you could access seventy-eight, which does have a turning lane to turn right into Judah Crossing? And there's, um, the median on seventy-eight, which kind of helps ease traffic. Um, and that, my thoughts is that might be an option, um, kind of in relation to DOT saying you cannot have a curb cut onto seventy-eight.
We have not approached Judah Crossing to do that. I'm not sure about, um, if, again, because we are, our property is in unincorporated Gwinnett, and that's in the city, it, it makes it a little, um, more challenging to, uh, to go through there, because there may be an inner, what they call interparcel agreement, but I don't know that the interparcel agreement, if it exists, would be applicable into property that is, um, uh, non-city of Loganville. We certainly could ask, and, you know, if this, um, if this commission wanted to table this to give us an opportunity to do that, we would, we would be agreeable to do that as well.
I actually like that. I, I would feel a lot more comfortable giving access to say, hey, do your, do your, do your business, be successful. But I'm all for keeping kids safe, and I'm all for keeping drivers safe as they're turning in and out. I've gone over to this property several times, and it was more attention to make those turns in and out of that, that subdivision. So I would definitely like to explore, um, seeing if you could get an easement on the back of your property, um, into Judah Crossing, which already has a lane going out to seventy-eight, there's already a cut.
Well, I mean, like I said, we're happy to investigate that. Again, my, my clients just want to be good neighbors. And, you know, if that's what, if that would work, we'll be happy to investigate that.
That would, that would. I think that would alleviate your neighbors' concerns, a lot of your neighbors' concern, too, you know. That way, you don't, you're not having all that traffic on Skyland.
Well. Yeah, again, that would be up to Gwinnett County.
Yeah, that's out of our control.
Yeah, we have no control over that, so it would be under Gwinnett County's jurisdiction still. Do we have any other discussion, comments, questions? If you, come up to the podium, please. Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ms. Bernerby, and I live on two twenty Skyland Drive. And, um, I remember a year ago, we got a same letter, and, um, regarding this. So, uh, I decided to go in, and a couple of my neighbors, actually not all neighbors, they just moved out, they sold their house this past year, and we got new neighbors. So they have no idea what's going on. They don't know what happened last year, and I think one of the first thing it will be to let them know, the new neighbors, what's going on. Because none of them are here. I don't know which one of you guys remember the first meeting at the house. And one of the things that they told us, not to worry about their equipment, because they had it somewhere else. That they just want to run their business, and that's it. No noise, no nothing, no trucks, because they knew it's residential, and there, there's kids, there's families. And as you can see, that entrance, honestly, with big trucks, it's, it's a danger. So I would say, okay, get the new neighbors, ask them to, because they don't know. My, my neighbors right across from me, they're new, they're brand new, they recently moved in January, I think, or in December. They don't know what's going on. They don't know what's going on in that, at that house. So I think it will be something that they should, put them also in, uh, that they should know about this.
Yeah, that's a good idea, um, but if you notice, when you drive in and out of Skyland, there are signs both on seventy-eight and in front of the property on Skyland, advertising this meeting and that there's possible rezoning and annexation.
Yeah, of course. But sometimes when, when they don't know, you know, exactly, with the first, the first meeting, that someone was over there, and it's all the same, like, we want to make business, welcome business. But in the residential area, now with the trucks, it's like, it's an, I think it's a hazard for, for families, the residential area. And as you can see, when you turn, it's kind of like a blind spot. Thankfully, I don't know who cleaned the property right across, because there were like trees and everything, and it was ugly, and it was dangerous. And now it's more clear, but still, like, having trucks, everybody's trying to get out, going back in, it's kind of, it's a hazard for families. And like I said, if they came last year telling us something, this is not going to change, we just want to have our business here, we just want to have our office running here, with no trucks, no nothing, no materials, we're okay. I wa, I was okay with it. And I was like, that's fine, there's no big deal, they can have, they can run their business, it's okay. But now seeing the trucks and it's like, so what's going on now? You know, there's a little more noise going on, so it's, like, I get it, they want to do business, but we want to live peacefully. Like, it would be amazing if one of you guys lived there, just to see our struggle. You know, because sometimes when you don't live in that area, you don't know what's going on. But when you do, you see that every day, you struggle with it. It's just like, so what can I do now? You know, what are the best options? Of course, we, we're looking for options here. But as us who live there for, you know, ten years, twenty years, they're forever homes, you know, it's, it's kind of like a struggle for us, like, to adapt or to make these changes, but at the same time, we have kids, that you have high schools in the back, middle schools and elementary schools. So not just our kids, whoever wants to buy their, their, their houses in the future, that's also gonna be some type of an issue, you know. Hopefully not, but the way I'm seeing it right now, it's like, I don't think, like, they can keep the office, just not their trucks. That's for me. I think I'll be more comfortable with that, no noise, just keep their office, and that's it, like, nothing else. Like, just park their cars, leave, and that, that's all. Like, you don't have to bring your trucks. I don't know where they have them stored, and why they don't keep them there. You know, like, that's not an issue. It hasn't been an issue for the last, what, a year? And, uh, now it's gonna be an issue. You know, and I'm pretty sure I'm not gonna be the first one, nor the last one, who's gonna come, not right now, but later on, you know, to talk about this. We don't want an accident, but I also appreciate if you guys involve the new neighbors. Because they might see what's, uh, uh, there's a meeting, okay, but do they know exactly what's going on? Were they there at the first meeting, where they tell us, nothing's going to happen, no big changes, just our office and a few parking spots, and that's it, nothing else? And we're like, oh, okay, you know what? Okay, cool. You know, keep it residential, keep it nice, it looks good, our houses, those are our houses, you know. And now with the trucks and, and we're like, okay, so what's going on? Where are the promises that they made and that they want to change? I get it, like I said, they want to grow their business, they want to be part of the city, which is amazing. But just the trucks and the hazard of having trucks coming in and coming out, I think that represents a great danger to the families and kids and the, the buses that goes in and out, too, because like I said, high schools and middle schools and elementary schools are right there. So to me, it's kind of like a hazard to have that, you know, just something to have in mind, and also the new neighbors. Consider them, you know, maybe ask them to, hey, do you guys agree with this? You know, like, I know not majority's here, but I, I believe everybody, all the neighbors kind of agree with some of the ups and downs, you know, like, of what's going to happen. But at the end of the day, we live there. You know, we, 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 we live there, and that's our everyday thing. It's not just right now, it's not just tomorrow, it's an everyday thing. So it's something that, uh, you know, hopefully you guys can consider that, not just for us, but the families, or whoever wants to purchase the property or anything in the future. And have the new neighbors consider, you know, let them know what's going on, and, because they don't know, and they don't think nothing's going on until the changes are there, and like, hey, what happened? Nobody told us anything. So I think it would be nice for them to know what's going on, too. That's just, you know, my thought.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion from the commission? All right. All right, we have a, a comment to make a motion to table this until the next month's meeting.
I make that motion.
We're good? I'm sorry.
The original motion will have to be amended.
Okay, the original motion have to be amended, okay, so, um. Well, the motion at first was to start and to approve or deny the annexation and rezoning tonight. New motion would be that we table this until our next month's meeting. To give the applicant a chance to check with Gwinnett County on Tiffany's idea of doing access into the parking lot or driveway of Judah Crossing, and allowing entrance and exit to that back storage lot from that area.
I agree with that.
All right, so, is that?
So Lisa would need to amend her motion.
I make, I'm making a motion to amend my motion to table this until our next meeting, so the applicant has time to research a possible solution for another driveway and meet with Gwinnett County if they need to.
Got the amended motion? She did the amended motion, um, okay, to allow, to table this, uh, from a vote tonight, to make the motion to table the, uh, issues until our next month's meeting, to allow the applicant a little more time to talk to Gwinnett County. So we have that motion from Lisa, we have a second from Tiffany. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, then we will table this.
Do all four of them.
Do, I'm sorry.
You gotta do all four.
Yeah, do all four. Okay. All right, so, that was for number A, for case number R two-three dash oh-oh-two. Dean Vasquez, uh, application to rezone the point four, four-nine acres plus or minus at three fifteen Skyland Drive, map parcel five-one-five-nine oh-one-three, Gwinnett County. Wanting to change from O and I to CH. Do we have a motion here?
I make a motion that we table this until our next meeting.
Okay, got a motion to table this one, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Case number A23-003, Dean Vasquez requesting annexation of property located at 315 Skyland Drive, Loganville, Gwinnett County. Map parcel on this one, 5159014, .46 plus or minus acres. Do we have a motion here?
A motion that we table this until our next meeting.
All right, motion, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Case number R23-004, Dean Vasquez filing application to rezone the .46 plus or minus acres located at 315 Skyland Drive. Map and parcel 5159014, Gwinnett County, Georgia. The property owner being Dean Vasquez. Current zoning is ONI through Gwinnett County. Requested zoning would be CH for the development of his existing office and opaque fenced outdoor storage. Do we have a motion here?
I make a motion that we table this.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Tim? I'm sorry? Amanda?
I'd like to make a quick request of an applicant. Since you've been granted this to table it and go see what your other options are,